Good afternoon, I would like to call the City of Lloydminster Council meeting, regular council meeting on Monday, February 12th, 2018 to order. At this time, we'll take a silent moment of personal reflection. First item is a reminder that all members of council are obligated to declare a conflict of interest or of pecuniary interest by per Section 133 of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Worship. I'll be declaring the pecuniary interests for items 6.4.2 and 6.4.3.
Thank you, Counselor. We have Counselor Monroe attending by telephone. Counselor Monroe, can you hear us?
I can.
Great. So I'll ask counsel just to take time as we debate today to ensure that we allow whoever's speaking to finish. I'll recognize you as I usually do, just so Counselor Monroe can keep up because she's getting fed three telephones to her phone. She is going to be, I believe, muting so that we don't get any backfeed from that end unless she's to speak, and we'll be calling her to for comments as well as when I take the votes. A call for vote, I will ask her to vote at the end of voting for declaring the pastor or defeat. Any questions, anyone? It's a little different, but thank you to Counselor for making it work from that sunny Hawaii or wherever you may be.
It's not worked.
It's not worked, okay. Thank you, Counselor. All right, let's get to the down to the business of the day, ladies and gentlemen. Agenda, item number two is additions or deletions to the agenda. Not seeing any, I'll move on to item number three and look for counsel for direction regarding the approval of this agenda. Counsel Torson.
I move that the agenda dated February 12th, 2018 be approved.
Second, Counsel Dychuk. Any discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Counselor Monroe, how do you vote?
Four.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Moving on to item number four, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Again, I look to counsel for direction. Counsel Buckland.
I move that the regular council minutes dated January 20th, 2018 be approved.
Second, Counsel Torson. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Monroe, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Motion is carried. All right, moving on to item number five, new business arising from the business. Minutes. Any noted? If not, we'll move on to item number six, new business, departments, and bylaws. City Manager's office, 6.1, nothing to add. I'll move to 6.2, the office of the city clerk. The city manager, the city clerk.
Thank you, Worship. The first item I have in 6.2.1 is the forensic audit of Lloydminster Facilities Corporation. And the recommendation I have is that the council accept the forensic audit of the Lloydminster Facilities Corporation as information. In the spring of 2017, council contacted the city's legal representatives regarding the Lloydminster Facilities Corporation. Concerns were expressed, funds were transferred from the city's corporation code, council's review and/or approval. And the mayor and council contacted the city auditorium. Also, audit the corporation, obtain further information regarding any amounts transferred or owing between the two entities. The information received suggested that the city was owed approximately $1 million by the corporation as of April 30th, 2017. Reynolds, Murth, Richards, and Farmers engaged Myers, Mars, and Penny to conduct the audit of Lloydminster Facility Corporation. MNP conducted an extensive audit of Lloydminster Facility Corporation, the results of which are attached to this RFD and are summarized below. No instances of dishonest staff behavior, employee malfeasance, or external party malfeasance were identified. Money's transferred to the corporation will move through a due-to-from accounting process. The above process does not include and has not resulted in documented approval of transfer by council, and the money owed to the city as of April 2017 was $1,8481. The accumulated debt represents the true additional cost to operate the facility since 2010 and exists as a result of budgeting shortfalls. The options council has is if council accepts the forensic audit of the Lloydminster Facilities Corporation as information, this provides a formal acknowledgement that council has received and reviewed the audit report, or the council provided administration with further direction on this matter. The City of Lloydminster bylaws 35-2010 and 3-2012 established the corporation-provided governance structure, having authority to do so granted through Lloydminster Charter. RMRF engaged MNP to conduct the audit and compile the audit findings. And the budget and financial implications is the city provides the operational funding through a budget request process and capital funding. The city provides a capital funding. And if there's any questions, prepare for this.
Thank you, city clerk. Look to counsel for questions. Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Worship. I don't really have any questions on this one as much as I have some comments on it. So, reading through the report really, for the non-accountants, would be the facilities corp, which is the golf course, the curling, and the restaurant didn't make as much money as it otherwise appeared to be making, and that the amount covered by property taxes was greater than the $56,000 that was being requested from council each year. Which is one of the few reasons why, you know, number one on this background says no instances of dishonest behavior. I'm not sure if it was a conscious choice or if it was general incompetence of someone that led to the fact that you continually asked for $56,000 every year when you knew in fact that the city was paying several invoices and had a growing balance owing between the two parties. So, I take a little exception to, you know, just that general comment because to me, it appears as though someone was either dishonest or incompetent in that area or something. I don't know. But that's why it's especially disappointing to me as we were elected October 2016, 2017 budget that we received said that the golf course needed $56,000 from the city to operate. Even using all the averages to create a budget, they still said $56,000 is all that's required for taxpayers to make this thing run, when in fact, at that time, the government was not covering its own expenses and that it was just being run through a payable and receivable between the two parties. So, it's very disappointing from here. What do you do? Well, we have already started on looking towards having an operational review done, which was approved by council, and hopefully that points us in the right direction to help maybe kind of fix this thing, but also maybe changing our mentality that the golf course doesn't necessarily have to break even, or it doesn't have to be only 56,000. It's a municipal service, it's another option for recreation, and maybe it just needs more money to run. But at the end of the day, you do feel a little bit duped when you're in this chair, which is disappointing. And I think the public should feel a little bit duped on this one as well. Thank you.
As I look around, Counsel Monroe, you're not here, so I don't know if you have anything I want to ask you to.
Pardon me?
Would you like to say anything or have any questions at this time?
I have no comments right now.
Okay. Counsel Dychuk.
Yeah, I sort of want to echo just a bit, I guess, what I hear from Counsel Torson. I think as I read through the report, there's a sense that people have slid into habits of doing things because they were the people of the day in doing what they thought was appropriate, and because it went by one year, it went by another year, and it was behavior that was continued. I guess my concern is how some of these actions, I guess, get missed. And most important for me is that as the plan we have going forward, we're going to ensure that we don't have this again. There'll be another council after us and another one after that, and I think what we want to be making sure of, I guess, is that the steps we take today will ensure that, you know, the next councils of the day in our community can count on processes that are going to withstand the test of the audit, that withstand the test of what is, I guess, acceptable practice and the highest bar we can put it on that. And ensure, I guess, that when we look at the three facilities really that are there, that we have a clear picture about what each of them do, the services they provide, which one's losing money, which one's making money. And I think we've seen that in spite of reduced level of people coming out to golf, the golf center was continuing to bring money. The curling center, I think, I've talked to a couple of people who curlers, recognize that there's a challenge, particularly around curling, in order for that facility to operate. The restaurant and the beverage service, whatever it is, there's a whole set of challenges around operating a restaurant. And I guess the question of the day is, does the city want to be in the restaurant business or do we want someone else to take care of that for us? So those are, I think, some of those pieces that, you know, as we go forward, along with this plan that we have, I guess, is going to address those issues so that A, there's confidence in what we're doing, B, I guess, is that we don't continually look to the taxpayer to find a way to simply begin remediating some of these issues, and can we remediate them? Because I think the other part we do know, I don't think there's a recreation facility in this community that makes money. And we look at supporting them with some dollars and cents. I think the impression I was under, and I think the same thing could be said with, you know, Counsel Torson, and we saw the $56,000 and thought, hey, this is great. That's not a big cost to carry on. But I think it's a complex challenge. You have three big pieces in there, and I think one of the things that we strive for is making sure we have that accountability and transparency, and everybody understands what we're doing, and we're all playing by the same rulebook with the same set of rules. So I guess as those pieces come together and the plan comes together, I'm looking forward to see, you know, what those pieces are in place to make sure that we are managing it to the best of our ability and a way that's responsible.
Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Worship. I guess when you look at a period of seven, eight years, seven and a half years, whatever all washed out to, I haven't done the math, but we're probably looking at $125,000 a year to run the place. And there's nothing wrong with it. There's curling there for the seniors, there's golfing, there's all sorts of things going on there. And we've got to remember how that facility got there. And it was paid for by donations from many, many people in the city, their personal donations. And I know for a fact that Juniplex was, as we call it, I don't know what you call it today, Gulf of God, pardon me, was built with private money, donated to the city. And I think that it was a great idea, and it's always been a great idea. I think where we went wrong is the city let go of running the place. I don't know why we had a separate corporation to look after the golf course. We can hire a manager, like we do right now, and we can run the place, and we can monitor on a regular basis through the city manager's office. And we know what's going on, and we can work on a budget that's reasonable to operate the place. And if it costs a hundred grand a year on an average, we all know there's been a downturn in the economy in the last couple of years, ups and downs, I'm sure, falling like this the revenues. But I think the first mistake was to get out of the business and try to turn it over to a separate corporation. So that, we would know on a weekly, monthly basis what finance is doing, they would be telling us, as they always do, about how things are going, and we could be on top of much. The part that bothered me was some of the process and how it was funded within the report. And legally, I don't just know how all that works, but it didn't look to me like it was the right way. Yeah, was it illegal? According to the report, it wasn't, but it was done incorrectly. And so the accountability, how does that get back to council? And that's what I'm interested in. We're elected to know what's going on, and when this stuff gets outside of council and it drips away, it's pretty hard to track down. This is six or seven years. Was it 10 to 2017? And that's, for argument's sake, seven years. And now it's on the table. There's something wrong there. So, without further ado, I just, my position is now and always will be unless somebody convinces me different. Our golf course and our curling club into the city and put it under the director of that division of the city and under the city manager's care and finance and just operate it like Budgiller Park or any other ice arena we have in this town, and account for it the same way as we do for those facilities. If we think we're going to make a profit out of it, go to it. We've all watched these recreational facilities for years. And all it is is, we need the recreational facilities, that's what makes the community. It's a big part of our community. And it's no different than the seniors lodge over there, the senior center over here. It costs money to keep that facility. It doesn't all pay for itself. And so, don't say anymore, that's where I'd like to see us go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Buckland, then I'll follow up with Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Worship. You know, look at these kinds of things and it's what can we do going forward? You know, we have to get this information out so we can make the proper decisions moving forward. It doesn't make what happened any better. But to play devil's advocate slightly, you know, I think it just needs to be stated publicly for those that don't know, because those of us around the table that do might take this piece for granted. A large portion of the reason this was turned into a facilities corporation was at the time that that was done, the city was not going to be allowed to have a liquor license at the golf course at all. It was just against the rules for a city to hold that license, so it was moved to a facilities corporation so the city could continue to provide that service at the golf and curling center. So, just so that's out there, and not saying that we want to keep it as a facilities corp going forward, that the right decision may be to move it back in house and do a council break where saying, well, look into that, get that stuff done. Just wanted to have that little piece of history publicly stated here at the same time for reasoning behind that move.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Torson.
Thank you, Worship. I guess I'm still on the doom and gloom of this thing a little bit because there's two other points that I had written down that I want to make. One was that I was really disappointed with the loans that were being made without council approval is one, and then the other thing that Counselor Baker mentioned is that there was no communication back and forth between council and the board of directors of this thing through. Up until Rick McDonald was here, I had no idea that there was an issue. I had no idea there was an outstanding liability. I had no idea that city was paying bills for the facilities corp, and I had no idea that the city was giving loans that needed council approval without council approval. On that note, what do we do moving forward? We look at what the operational review tells us we should probably do, because we have several very smart people looking at it right now. I had an opportunity to talk to them last week, and I'm pretty confident that they will come back with the right format of what it needs to look like, and I think that we're headed in the right direction as far as that goes. As far as what the right cost of this facility is annually, I guess we'll see how that shakes out once we get the operational review. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Certainly, you've shared, many of you have shared the thoughts I had. There's, it is a public recreation facility. I think that's the number one thing we need to come away with, as it was alluded to by many counselors. Every public recreation facility in our city costs money to operate from the taxpayers, and it's no different. I agree completely as well. Where policies and procedures go wrong that allowed this to happen, I think that's very evident and been brought forward by the work that this council did by initiating the operational review. Thank you to administration for that recommendation and support of council in December. That work is being done. So they're able to take this audit, look at it thoroughly, speak to members of the board, members of the community. I also have the opportunity to be interviewed by the folks completing the review. So they're seeking input. And I think it will be very interesting to see their findings, recommendations coming forward. At the end of the day, there's $1,008,000 that has been put into the golf and curling center that is not, in essence, recoverable, that as a loan, as it stated as a loan, it's not a money-making venture. We've just seen, as Counsel Baker alluded to, over seven years, about $125,000 to $150,000 a year is what it costs to run. There will be years, and I hope that golf, except because of the weather, and the economy coming back, and our curling rink is full seven nights of the week, and people enjoying it in the assandies, schools are using it for school curling programs. It's all part and pieces, but today, we have the reality, we live with the economy that we have in our city, and that's where it's at. But I think that it certainly puts that forward. One item that I want to just seek a little clarity from administration, because I think the public's going to ask, there was a cost to this, they saw it, and I'm sure people are going to ask, so let's, as we've demonstrated before, this council, I believe, is truly to the point that we want to make sure that there's nothing, no questions left unturned. So, look to the city man for where the city clerk, whoever wants to handle that.
Thank you, Worship. The final bill, and not quite final, I might have a few odds and ends, but we're just over $100,000. Bills to date as of the number received was about $105,000, so it could be a few dollars shared there, but that's the base for it.
Thank you, city manager. I know this audit is going to be going for months. The document is thousands of pages long on top of the actual 48 pages that we see, because they reviewed numbers on numbers. They worked with our finance department at the city, they worked with the golf course team to ensure that when this report came forward, it was complete. And I appreciate the efforts of our team, both at the golf and curling center, through the facilities corporation, as well as our finance team for supporting this, because certainly they had a lot of information that needed to be shared, a lot of information to go back, and there was some history dug up there. So, thank you very much to ensure that we got a report that was thorough and complete, because I think the members of council, as I look around, we all agree that we wanted to make sure this was being done. We got to the bottom, we did, we investigated, or they investigated on our behalf, and this is the final report that we have. So, I think that it certainly gives us some direction to give to administration, to the board of directors, and to executive manager Don, as the leader of that group, out today and board of directors, the need for where we need to go, and working with, let's just say, our services, we could get bylaw, policies, and procedures. It's not the first time that things have challenged us a little bit, but we'll get through this, and we will ensure that this council can only see the full picture, as Counsel Baker, you alluded to, and some of the other counselors, that we want to know what's going on, and we've got that groundwork set. So we'll get that from that perspective. Any other comments? Counsel Monroe, would you add anything else?
I think I should say that it is obviously unfortunate about the final number that money in over the city, but I think we can find positivity in that there was no instance of the bond in binding staff. And then moving forward with the transparency that we have the communication between the board and council, and had the board asked, we've been doing for the operational review, it's nothing but positive, we can cut out the backboard.
Absolutely agree, Counselor. I think change is in the wind. It's here already. With that, I will ask for direction from council, unless anyone else has anything to add. Counsel Buckland.
No, I'm not.
Good. Counsel Buckland.
Move the council accept the forensic audit of Lloydminster Facilities Corporation as information.
Second, Counsel Baker. Just want to remind everyone that the audit will be posted on the city website pages. So if people are wondering, want to see this document, they're following us on Facebook right now, FaceTime I should say, and seeing this or read about this, this document will be posted on the city website so that if anyone wants to peruse it, they can and see all the documents under investigation. So I'll call Counsel, all in favor? Counsel Monroe?
In favor.
Carry it. Moving on to agenda item number 6.2.2. I'll look to the city clerk.
Thank you, Worship. This item is an administrative item. The council approved the revision of start time of the February 2018 Governance and Priorities Committee meeting from 1:30 to 11:30 a.m. Provide council with revised start time on the February 20th, 2018 Governance and Priorities Committee meeting for consideration and decision. The 2018 meeting schedule is approved with all meetings beginning at 1:30 p.m. The creation of the draft agenda for the February 20th GPC meeting shows multiple public presentations as well as administration presentation. Administration is recommending an adjustment of the meeting start time to allow for more discussion on matters. The options council has is if council approved the revision of the start time of the February 20th GPC meeting from 1:30 p.m. to 11:30 a.m. This change will allow council more time to discuss items on the agenda, or the council not approve the revision of the start time.
Thank you, Worship. Any comments or questions? Counsel Monroe, do you have anything you want to add?
No comment.
All right. So I think that Counsel Buckland.
Thank you, Worship. I think it's just for those that want to follow us closely, I think that we should probably state that the business of the GPC meeting that day will start at 11:30 a.m. We'll still, I believe, the public presentations are still scheduled to start at 2:00 like they always, like they always were.
That's correct.
Yeah, so anybody wanting to follow along with the GPC, that their decisions, right, the discussions that are done at GPC, that will start at 11:30, the public presentations will be the two for those that want to follow that up.
Absolutely. We tried it with administration, Counsel Dychuk, and our department, but administration team to discuss the agenda. And we saw that it was going to be a fairly full agenda, and we still like to be finished at a reasonable time before supper. If we can, we felt it was in the best interest to move things ahead just a little bit for this meet, and hopefully this will not be a standard, this is just a runoff. But for that time change to happen, we do need to have a resolution from council agreeing to that. We're giving the public, again, enough time to know that so if they wish to join us, they can be here for that. So, it's a housekeeping matter, but at least we've done properly, we've ensured we follow the process. Counsel Torson.
I was just going to make a motion, say it's good. I move that council approve the revision of the start time of the February 20th, 2018 Governance and Priorities Committee meeting from 1:30 p.m. to 11:30 a.m.
Counsel Baker, second it. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Counsel Monroe?
In favor.
Carry it. Moving on to agenda item number 6.2.3. I'll look to the city clerk.
Thank you, Worship. The final item I have today is the, the council accept the declaration from the Heart of Treaty Six Reconciliation and that the mayor be authorized to sign the declaration. The Heart of Treaty Six Reconciliation is a group of individuals, community-based organization, families, and businesses from Onion Lake Cree Nation, Lloydminster, Frog Lake, First Nation, Palm Lake Cree Nation, that have been discussing the strength of the group on how to take action on what reconciliation can look like in the northwest of Saskatchewan. The group has identified two main priorities: education, awareness of reconciliation, and healing the effects of colonization. If council wishes to adopt the attached declaration, the City of Lloydminster commits to signing the document at an official event in March 2018. Engaging in education on reconciliation in the workplace, so that the organization understands the importance of moving forward on reconciliation. Having a representative attend a monthly three-hour meeting for at least twelve months. Attend events that are hosted by the Heart of Treaty Six reconciliation, and commit to possibly using the strength of the organization to help actualize reconciliation. Council's options are that council accept the declaration from the Heart of Treaty Six reconciliation, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the declaration. This will commit the city Lloydminster to the terms of the declaration, will allow the administration time to inform the Heart of Treaty Six group of intentions of council. The council has the option of not approving to sign the declaration. This will not commit the city to the terms of the declaration. Government implications, ask for the declaration, city may need to review and implement new policies to ensure compliance with the declaration.
Thank you, city clerk. Council, have any comments, questions? Counselor Baker. Look, excuse me. Yes, your worship. In the document, it said, "As per the declaration, the city Lloydminster may need to review and implement new policies to ensure compliance with the declaration." Like, I'm not sure what we're saying here. We aren't saying what it is, we just don't know what changes you might have to make, or is it, like, you just... Have we got this backwards?
No, Counselor, as they go forward to reconciliation, maybe some policies, there's some thoughts that maybe require changes to our policies. We're not sure at this time, that's part of the working group that will continue with that. That council always has direction over policy. And at the time, if a policy was about four, council could say, "May I?" or "May I?" to whatever changes were proposed.
But there's nothing glaring that would seriously affect that?
Not at this point.
Okay. Just the way I read it, I'm saying.
No, I appreciate that, Counselor. Counsel Dyche, you know, like, I think that there's several steps that this is still, in one way, from meeting over, for over a year. Counsel Dyche, myself, and Counsel Fagan have attended a variety of meetings with the Office of Treaty Commissioner, based in Saskatoon. Staff members of the Office Treaty Commissioner, as well as members of the First Nations of Onion Lake, Frog Lake, I have Little Pine, as well as Palmaker. So they, as well as groups throughout the city and around the city, including religious, members of the religious community in our city. As part of this goes back to the report out of the Office of Treaty Commissioner, there's a hundred and five policies that they recommended. We've looked at just a couple of them, and some of it is, city clerk alluded to, in the background information, some things of trying to move forward. One or two items that we believe that have some influence. And I think that's still critical. And one of it is the public recognition that we're working together. I think that's one of the key factors here. Everybody's coming to the table, has a shared vision to make things better for the communities affected everywhere. I think we're all affected.
I may, Worship, just, that'll come back. That'll come back to council, I don't think.
Well, this is, if I can, I'll answer this the best I can, as Counsel Dyche checked it, trying to, is that this is the starting point. This is a document that we're proposing. Now, everybody that's going to sign this is going through the same procedures. They came to council, because I'm not prepared to sign something without council approval in a case like this by any means. And they're setting the term into a small little contract or something the city might be doing, or prior, just my signature. This is, this is something I want to make sure that council and the community is very clear in what we're doing, and going from there. This is the building stones. This is the building blocks that will lead to things. But Counsel Dyche?
Yeah, I was just going to add, if I could, just to answer that part of it, is that I think more than anything, the suggestion is that as we go through this, be aware that if there's a practice that needs to be changed, you're going to have to change some of your policy as well. So it's not just you can blindly go to the meeting and say, put up your hand and say, yes, we're going to do that. There's accountability backwards here, so we need to make sure that what we do is of compliance with our own policy. And there's a whole realm of those pieces that, A, around even the kind of positions that maybe supported hiring practices, positions created in North Battleford, internet to agree that we heard about as well. So, you know, this is being led by the Office of the Treaty Commissioner, and so it looks a little different virtually in every city that you go to in terms of what they're doing. And that shouldn't surprise anybody, because everybody's at a different stage of the game in terms of what they're doing. This part of the agreement, I think, that we have is, it's really, you know, an opening step where, hey, we want to begin this dialogue, we want to show a commitment. And we recognize we have a role to play, we're all part of this, we're all treaty people. Beyond that, I don't think there's anything in here that commits the city outside of us continuing to meet. But I think more importantly, you know, there's a commitment on our part to begin the journey, to develop the trust and develop the opportunities that do exist. And I think we've talked, you know, to some length about economic development. What are those economic development possibilities that we have within our own community that we can begin to tap into? And I think back to, you know, those stats in Saskatchewan, by 2020, half the students in the K-12 system will be Aboriginal, First Nation, AP students. You're seeing that portion of the population grow quicker. And we need to create an environment where the workplace is safe, or environment is safe, where people know that, you know, you're, as we're guaranteed in Canada, it shouldn't matter what your race, creed, culture, religion is. It's a place where we all can sort of work together, and in a sense of equity.
Counselor Thorson.
Thank you, Worship. Although I can understand where Counselor Baker's coming from a little bit, but at this time, this is, in my opinion, purely symbolic of our commitment. But it's still very worthwhile and meaningful, and I think it's an important thing that we ought to do.
Counselor Fagan? Yeah, I think you indeed do have that structure, and as Michael said, every group, and we're with Lake Lake Colleges, we've got whole school division. There's just a number of community groups that are involved in this, and this has to be done just to set a mandate and a little bit of guidance. And just for another note, when you take a look at the recommendations from the reconciliation, there's nine points that are mentioned municipalities. So, you know, as a municipality, I think that we have a duty to try and try to help out on those nine different points, along with both federal and provincial governments. So, yeah, this is, it's very exciting times, and everyone does it, all looks a little different with each, we're kind of modeled a little bit off the Saskatchewan, First Saskatoon model, because they're well ahead of us. So I think that it's going to be an important move for all of us, and it's a thirty to forty-year procedure on the reconciliation. So it's going to be a long, long way.
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Monroe, do you have any comments?
Um, I think that's a good declaration, it's the first step in a obviously very long process. But definitely something that's worthwhile, and it brings some opportunity for our community, as well as all the other organizations that are adopted to the information. Um, I can't be anything but positive, it was coming, because it's coming from it. Because it's going to create young community and healthy life for everybody involved. And really, um, yeah, I just think it's the first step, truly building that, we, within all the community as well.
Thank you, Counselor.
I think the other part, just to add to it, where the city is currently supporting this whole process, is that, you know, answering communications with Leo on our website, we've listed the truth in reconciliation activities that are, you know, going on in within our community. And certainly, the public and Catholic systems, school divisions are playing extremely active role, the college is playing an active role. So we really are a lot of activities. Right now, we're, we kind of have a different role to play as a city, and I think at this point, we're recognized as kind of the legal entity, if you like, of the city. And it's symbolic to have our mayor sign the agreement. A lot of the work is going on, it's well underway. We have a blanket exercise tomorrow night. We have, I mean, there's storytelling, the list goes on. There's a movie that's going to be screened, I think, at College Park School later on in the month. So there are a variety of activities that are ongoing, and have been ongoing for some time now. But there's just a lot going on, and we have a space to occupy and make sure we do a response to the items.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, one of the documents, one of the items that I wanted to point out here, it's, it may agree with this, we proposed, or the document. Explore joint planning for events, programs, and policies that advance our goals of building relationships and trust. And the first one that comes to mind is the city has partaken of the First Nation on the I-Sum for many years. We actually, ahead of our time, we were already working on building business relationships with our partners in the area. Yet, you know, it fits right into what we're trying to do, help the economic situations, the both of, improve the relationships. I think that there, I think that we have strengths in our communication department at the city that may, other groups may not have, and certainly be able to access. And our communication team on occasion help strengthen the organization, carrying the message with our new website that's coming forward, building on community, and connecting community. Because our community has so many segments to it, and it's ongoing. We'll back to the recreation, the culture in our city in the weekend. We can have easily five, six events. And then we still hear about people saying, well, there's nothing to do in this. Well, there's lots to do, and how do we tie all that together? So it's, there's a challenge, and I think we're ready to step up to the challenge, and this is part of the challenge, is to carry that forward. I appreciate what I'm hearing around council table, and I encourage the council in that document signed, I hope you will join me when that opportunity arises in this community, or wherever we have to go. In the Heart of Treaty Six, to sign that document, wherever that signing is, because I think it'll be an opportunity to build on some great relationships we've seen over a long time. From the First Centers in this community, back to our colleges, the relationships that exist today. There's a lot of history there, there's a lot of things to build on, and to be proud of, but to build on others. So I think with that.
I just want to add one more comment, if I could, and none of the quiet. The title of, the name of the group, Part of Treaty Six, the fact that it's called that, well, actually, there's a lot of discussion, and animated discussion, if I could say, around what it should be called. Because I think certainly it was an attempt to make sure that we could find ourselves in the title and the name of the group without having it be a geographical swath. And, you know, our challenge again is because we're on the border, and we talked about it being the border. Well, the border is of insignificance, because we know that Treaty Six covers a larger area. And so as we began going through the names, we initially thought about it being Fort Pitt, because that's where the treaty was signed. And there was some discussion, well, no, maybe it should be where the schools were, as opposed to where they signed the agreement. And in the end, actually, when folks came up with names and titles, embedded them through the organizations and schools, the Heart of Treaty Six was the name that came up. Because the heart is symbolic of the center, and sort of the vitality of, in a metaphorical sense, if you like. And the fact of the matter is, is that Treaty Six covers a large territory, and that really Treaty Six speaks to that piece that goes on in there. So I think it's important, and it's important to recognize that there was thought and there was discussion. And certainly, Harry Lefon was with the Office of the Treaty Commissioner, spoke highly of the name, saying that it symbolized the, sort of, the character, and has this living sort of sense to it as well.
Counselor Fagan?
I'll make a motion.
Certainly.
The council accept declaration from the Heart of Treaty Six reconciliation, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the declarations.
Second, by Counsel Dyche. Any further comments or questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. Counselor Monroe, just confirm, no other questions?
No.
Okay. Call for the question, all in favor? Counsel Monroe?
In favor.
Thank you. Carry it. Moving on to six point three, the Chief Financial Officer, I'll look to the city manager.
Call on a broker to deal with this one.
Welcome.
So today we're asking that council authorize the attached list of utility receivables, trade account receivables, and bylaw tickets totaling a hundred and five thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty cents to be written off. The accounts that we are requesting to be written off consist of two hundred and sixty utility accounts that were closed in 2015 and 2016, totaling ninety-four thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. It also consists of seven accounts receivable accounts totaling four thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, and thirty-nine bylaw tickets totaling sixty-eight hundred dollars. These accounts have been in external collections for over a year, and attempts to collect on these accounts have been successful. So we would like to write up these accounts and clean up our accounting records. Does anyone have a question?
Counselor Thorson.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just curious, on our practice, more or less, you said they've been in external collections. Do we hire a collection agency that we collect a fraction of the price from them if they end up collecting on it?
Um, yes, through you, Worship, through the council of tourism. We do use Optimum Credit to work on our external collections. Sean, I think they were recently bought out of their name experience. But they'll try and collect on our accounts, and then they take a twenty percent commission on anything that they're able to collect, and we're like, the other eighty percent too.
So I was just curious, like, generally, how that works. Because we don't, it's not the same as, like, factoring them where you sell it and they pay you a friend. It's a different operation than that. It still sits on our books the entire time, and if they have a loan, we still have a loan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I was just curious, one other thing, it was something that was a resolution from SUMA, but I wasn't sure if in our charter we have the ability to, to or not, is to add outstanding fees and things like that onto the tax roll, so that you can try and recover it in other ways if you have, you know, delayed with accounts and things like that. Does anyone know if that's possible to do that? A previous city employee did kind of nod that we could, but I never had that conversation with them.
Or sorry, city clerk.
I would suggest that we could research and get the answer back to you, just so we can give you the correct answer.
Okay.
And certainly, based on, or following up on that, I guess, you know, the model that the province of Alberta is using with people who are banning oil wells, is they keep track of their name, and no longer will issue them a permit to operate in an oil company or whatever it is, so that they're banned. So is there any way this can be tied to anything else that other services from the city? Or I'm just trying to wrap my head around that sort of piece where there's, you know, whether it's attaching it to some other fee or whatever it is. But if individuals here owe us money, and they can no longer access a business license or something else where it has to be prepaid, if there's an opportunity to do that, that will certainly, and maybe we are doing it, I just don't know.
Thank you, Worship, through the council of Dyche. For utility accounts, if, so the issue with the accounts being sent to collections are tenant accounts. People that love the rent companies don't pay those taxes. In those cases, if that tenant ever applies first to the utility account to get any amounts that were outstanding, even if they've been written off, they are in charge, those written off amounts on the first bill. So we do try and collect on that, we are trying to make them pay a friend. If it's an accounts receivable account, it's usually a result of one city facility allowing customers to have a charge account. And so if any accounts receivables are written off as a result of not being a charge account, then they're just, the other charge privileges are removed.
Counselor Fagan?
Yeah, and I just need to take a look at it, because a lot of these are real petty. You know, you gotta, you know, but beating a dead horse, and, you know, it's under fifty dollars, or just, so, you know, these are really in collections for more than two years, pretty uncollectible, I would say, from my experience. And I think it's, there's a point in time where you just let it go, and have, have everybody chase their tails.
Director, if I could ask this, I understand utility receivables, what's exactly the definition of a trade account that we have used, the city? Could we give a little more, give a little more detail of what a trade account is?
Thank you, Worship. So trade account receivable would be anything that we have invoiced a customer for?
So in some cases, if it was rent on, renting some city property as an example, and or service that we provided to a property owner or something like that, they just had to pay for it, okay? No, I think that, I know this has been discussed about water bills and utilities, and I don't want to bring up past bylaw of late, so certainly with that perspective. In most cases, we're looking at about two to three months' worth of water bills on average? Is that what, before, that we wrote off? Because a lot of the numbers look very similar for size in some of those bills. Is that was basically three, four months before the water was cut off that they hadn't paid? Is that what we're, in essence, writing off?
That's correct.
Yeah, because it's, I think, if we go back to, I think, I've tried to refer back, but we refer back to the audit, forensic audit. There was some very good information that the unemployment rate increased in this city by three hundred and eighty-eight percent over a time not that long ago. And that I'm sure led to people walking out on their apartments in various places, and we have staff holding the water bill in this space. So it's demonstrated very clearly. Counselor Thorson.
Thank you, Worship, but two questions. One, I'm just curious on kind of post-changing of the utility bylaw, if a lot of these have come down, because there's an initial deposit required on setting up a new account, as I understand it? That would have been in the summer of August twenty sixteen, kind of thing?
Thank you, Worship, through the council of tourism. We did increase the deposit required on tenant accounts from sixty-eight dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. And we've also... And we've also, sorry, so now the $250 will cover most people's two-month water bill. So the deposit will cover.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it still will cover everything if it's a three-month bill type of thing, but it should reduce some of the issue. But I just wanted to give a shout out, at the end of the day, to the utility billings team, because they're doing pretty, pretty darn good on collections, considering the 0.165 percentage of revenue being uncollectible. Most, most businesses would not complain of that kind of collectibility, so, thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Thank you, sweetie Brooke. Under bylaw tickets, ticket number 42328, $2,500. Is that a traffic ticket? It just says bylaw ticket.
Thank you, Worschen.
I believe I can answer that today.
City, please, sir.
I believe that is for abuse and animal ticket, that's a specific fine for $2,500. And that's. You don't have a license plate number then? What's that? You don't have a license plate number?
Not for that one, Counselor.
Okay, I thought that maybe was a traffic ticket, and that's a pretty big one. And I thought if that was traffic, surely good as we can track down that.
Yeah. Different.
Thank you.
I'd say, clarifying that. Counselor Monroe, do you have any comments or questions?
No, pardon.
All right. Any other questions, last round, sweet Brooke? Not seeing any, thank you very much, Brooke. I'll look to council for direction regarding 6.3.1, 2017, accounts write-offs. Counselor Thorson?
To move that council authorize the attached list of utility receivables, trade account receivables, and bylaw tickets totaling $1,000, or $105,566.26 to be written off.
Second, my counsel, Dychuk. Any further discussion or comments? Nothing from you, Counselor Monroe?
No.
All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Counselor Monroe?
In favor.
Carrie? Moving on to 6.4.1, the Community Development Services. Look to the City Manager, through to Executive Manager, Dante.
Thank you, Worschen. I'll actually call up Joel Tercop to present your statement. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Joel.
I'm here today to recommend the purchase of an eight-by-eight mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of $12,500 plus GSC. And administration for a community committee to determine location is for the mural. Canada murals approached the city of Lloydminster in late November 2017. Created to celebrate Canada 150, the goal of this project is to create 150 murals across Canada that will help unify the community and celebrate their diversity. The community mural would reflect the image of a train car, and it'd be attached to Canada 150 train with all other Canadian murals. There are two size options, there's an eight-by-eight and an eight-by-12. The eight-by-eight is tall at half thousand, the eight-by-12 is fifteen thousand. There are many locations within the city to hang the mural. Some may be down that location by an aquatic center, service support center, by Miller Park Center. At this time, the exact location of the painting is not needed. Administration recommends creating a community committee to select the best location for the mural. Once the committee has selected the location, they'll come back to council for approval. The mural project is an unbudgeted item. Administration recommends a charge per painted tile to help offset the cost of the project and along sponsorship. Some of the options, approved purchase of eight-by-eight mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of $12,500 plus GSC. That administration for a community committee to determine location of mural. Council approved the purchase of eight-by-12 mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of $15,000 plus GSC. The council asked administration to form a community committee to determine location of mural. Or three, the council does not support the purchase of Canada 150 mural, as this is an unbudgeted item. Under budget financial expectation, the mural project is an unbudgeted item. Administration's intent is to charge a fee of $20 per painted tile to help offset the cost of the project. Administration will also look for sponsorship to complement the fee per tile. Administration received confirmation on a grant which will fund a capital project at the Biokeen Aquatic Center at 50% of the project cost, which is a savings of $7,000. The savings could be used to apply to the project, there's a shortfall in participation fees and sponsorship.
Thank you, Joel. Counselors, questions? Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, Worschen. We talk about want-to-haves, need-to-haves, and must-haves in our community. We just came through what I would consider a pretty difficult budgeting process, where taxes are going up, and different fees are going up. If we, we'll speak to the grant part of this, if there's a grant that comes in towards it, it could possibly save $7,000 of the project cost. But that grant isn't for this project, that grant is to be used, could be used for something else. I just, I just can't feel comfortable with speeding in favor of this, based on the situation that we're currently in. I think it's, I think it's wrong to, to take this unbudgeted and put it in there with everything else that we've, we've been doing. I'm all for diversity and all for, for all of those things, but I just can't get my head around spending this money on this issue.
Appreciate that, Counselor. I guess one of my thoughts, I'll take a crack at this for a moment, is certainly, we have applied numerous times, I give administration a great deal of credit, over this past year, celebrating Canada's 150th birthday. We lied, I don't know how many times, administration applied for grant funding from the federal government, and we were denied. Work being done by Miller Park, which is a center of our community, a real gem in the center of our community, that we weren't able to do. You know, one of the things that people have asked me is, "How are we going to remember Canada 150 in the city?" And we didn't, we had a great celebration, ended it, we celebrated it. But what is the lasting memory that we're going to leave our community? And I do agree with Counselor Buckingham that we have went through a tough process. But I guess, in the same token, the legacy that we leave, our future generations is what we leave. And if we leave them nothing, that's what we've left them. So I appreciate administration finding that $7,000, because we challenge the administration every day. That's the message I certainly convey when I chat with administration staff. Can we find savings? And that comes back at the end, and it's a great thing, because that hopefully will leave us a little bit more money in the piggyback. At the end of the day, if we don't leave something for our next generations, what will we leave? I guess that I had a tough time with this one. I believe there's corporate sponsorship available, I think there's going to be groups within our community and individuals that say this is going to be the opportunity to leave the mark of 2017, the City of Lloyd. And I think that with that in mind, I'm, I'm supportive. It goes against my grain a little bit as well, Counselor Buckingham, as you stated, I'm the same. I don't like to see unbudgeted things, but this is an opportunity. Again, Mosaic Canada for taxpayers, my information is a private business. It's not, it's not the government of Canada supporting us, and that's one of the challenges, right? We've applied for the grant money, and we didn't get it for various opportunities. So I guess I, I stand that way. I'll let Counselor, come back to you. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Worschen. I certainly agree with Counselor Buckingham's initial statement, you know, it's, it's what it is, and it's the truth. But I think that the next celebration will be probably 200 years. Most of us won't be here.
I agree with you.
One or two of us won't be, you know. And I think it's a good thing, but I do have a question. If automatically said, or I'm interpreting this is going to be outside. And there's a few people in this room know that when we had a city centennial with the women at Lincoln College, we were told, "Don't put it outside. It won't stand up." I heard that many, many times. And that's what bothered me, don't put it, like, this is smaller, this is eight-by-eight, I think. And it just bothers me, it's going to go outside. We've already done repairs to it, 20 years will be gone, according to the experts of the day, when that one was built. Because I was at some of those meetings, and I know what they talked about. So I'm a little worried that we're automatically, if we're saying that outside, look inside too. There's some great spots, I'm sure, somewhere in the city. Because I hate to see the thing built, sponsored, and then fall apart in 10 years. And it may not, but that's been one of my big concerns. I, I think that if you do assign one development, and the sponsors get a little recognition for putting their name out there, you know, just like, you know, a little, or a little sponsorship, just saying, you will get some help. And at the end of the day, it shouldn't cost a great deal of money. With that, I'm in favor, but please look at the insides as well.
Thank you, Worschen. George Counselor, Baker. We haven't, we haven't decided whether it goes indoors or outdoors. The recommendation would be that a, a committee would make that decision. It is recommended that it's indoor.
I guess from our last council meeting, it was, I was getting the feeling it was going outside, if we bought it.
There's nothing to.
Good.
Counselor Buckingham, they post-facade, then Counselor.
Thank you, Worschen. I want to speak to a colleague who we, I have the fortunate pleasure of being in the sales industry as a full-time career. The city is in the sales industry so to speak when it comes to this type of thing, is we will be soliciting sponsorship of, of this kind of thing with the economy, the way it is, with what I hear out there every single day. You know, we have rainboards, we have baseball fields, we have soccer fields, we have all of these things that we're asking people to sponsor, and I think those are worthwhile community sponsors. They provide both our youth and our elderly lots of opportunity in the community. So if I'm running our sales division of the city and saying, "Hey, one of the priorities that I want you to have, what do I want you to target your efforts? I want you to target enough things that the whole community is going to benefit from directly." You know, if we're going to ask them for a mural sponsorship, we're going to ask them for a report sponsorship that's going to help offset the cost of the facility, I want them to start doing those things that are going to help our facilities as opposed to something along these lines.
I think Counselor, well, point you got there. Counselor Baker, you can, Counselor.
Well, I think Joel, you have the right idea as far as a community committee goes, but I think we as municipality need to step back from this and let a community committee look after the whole thing. The, the appetite is there, they would like to do that, and that would be the same as fundraising. It's not the city that's going out and asking for dollars, it would be coming from the arts and culture committee. So I think we need to take a look at that, and perhaps, you know, we, we might entertain at some point, if they came up a little shirt, that we might be able to kick in for a small amount of $5,000 or whatever it may be. But I think that by letting it, just like when we had the Pintys, we didn't go out and raise money, it was the, the past Curly Club, the members of the Curly Club that raised the money. So I think we need to stay in that same format. I have spoken to some of those folks, and they would be, they would really enjoy the opportunity to do that.
If any, Worschen, to council, there's some times of stability with this. They're collecting, so they'll do only 150 murals, so we do need a decision on whether we're going to purchase this or not. And just to be completely transparent with the Pintys, there was a committee that was there, but it was led by the city. On that one, so just to make sure that.
Yeah, but no, Worschen, I think, yeah, I've got some representation on there, but it just wouldn't be, we wouldn't be taking it actively at all as far as on the fundraising side of things. And spirit, and you would have people that are, that would organize the overall purchase and the installation of the unit, absolutely.
Counselor Worschen?
So, yes, Worschen, thank, thank you, Joe, just a question. So we received a grant, confirmation for a grant that will fund the capital project at the Biokeen Aquatic Center, 50% of the project cost, which is a savings of $7,000. But if you look at the numbers, one is 12.5, the other one's 15. So are we going for the one that has 600 participants or 400 participants? And I'm not clear about that, but certainly 600 participants to, to sell that many is a lot, substantially more than 400. And I'm concerned about us, our ability to send, sell 400. So as I look at those dollars, I mean, that's kind of, I'm unclear as to where that would go, other than the Biokeen Aquatic Center. So if the site is summers, you've got to sell them all, and you're still halfway behind in terms of the total cost. The thing with the Biokeen Aquatic Center, and I walk by it almost every day during the summer, and I look at the place and know that its lifespan is, is almost done as well, particularly the outside of the building. And I'm going, if we need to invest in a particular project in Biokeen, I wonder whether the $7,000 can be spent better in that facility in terms of ensuring its longevity. We don't have plans on the books immediately to replace the pool. So every little cent we can put into that project, I think, would be best put into that project. But I agree with Counselor Fagman, I mean, around this piece, and so, I'm trying to wrestle through this. This isn't big, it isn't the big dollars, whatever it is, but there's a principle behind all of this in terms of, you know, we, we want to leave a legacy for the city, where do we find the money? And I haven't heard anybody say, "Let's take it out of this account or that account." Because if you can't sell the 200 or the 400, whichever you're doing, you're still behind the meatball in terms of half that amount. And so where do we get that? Who's saying I can take that out of this account or that account?
Yeah, so the savings at the Biokeen Aquatic Center, that's for a different project, absolutely. So it's for an accessibility project that we have, we applied for a grant. They're going to supply 50% of that project. So we're saving that $7,000 from that capital project, which we can use. So it doesn't mean that it has to be at that facility, it's just a savings of $7,000. We found that we're going to save on our capital project.
Counselor Baker?
Worschen, and earlier, the correspondence, isn't there a deadline when we have to sign up?
Thank you, there is no deadline. Right now, they are finding 150 communities. I, I, I had my staff chat with the mural, Canada murals today, there are still room. So it's just, as soon as they fill up with 150 communities, they're done.
Well, that's kind of a timeline in my mind, one way or the other.
Absolutely, Counselor, you're right, at the, at the point, there is, there should be a closing of our tape.
So my point is, if you want to do it, you probably should do it when you're available. You don't want to do it, wait until they're gone.
Absolutely.
Well, does anybody know where they're at, as far as the sales go?
I'm not sure, they didn't give me a number. Two weeks ago, they told me they had about 90 communities already fit in, I know today. So our next steps with it would be that, once we tell them, "Yes, we're in," we'd be selecting a date to do the paintings, that kind of thing.
Counselor Monroe, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to speak to it, that obviously, Canada 150 was very commemorative event. And I'm not sure that our community has anything in it to really recognize, and we will lack in ways we'd rather that date. So for me, I think it, I definitely understand Counselor Buckingham and everybody else's point of view, but I also feel like it's a very wealth, or a worthwhile project in British and southern community. And somewhere where people gather, somewhere where I can do recognition of the immense place. The mural is totally very important to the piece of art and public theater, never mind anything else. So if you did charge $20 per tile and 600 tiles, that's $12,000. So we're having a shortfall of $3,000. I don't know that that would not be unadmissible. I think that 200 people or 200 families in our community would not see our community to be part of a lasting legacy, such as this, for $20. I don't see it as hard sell at all, but I do see it as definite asset. I know that my family, and definitely have that lasting legacy, and my understanding that they're going to get into book, is that correct, Joel?
That is correct, yeah, that would be good, a book of all those things.
With that, looking itself, if we give the opportunity for like, to be recognized as a community that is part of this project. And also, I think we also have the opportunity to make a revenue off this, as they did with the Buffalo and Twix. We could put posters, we could make prints, we could have that thing up there, and we're cutting $3,000. So I will take it in favor of this, just because I do feel that although it's an unbudgeted item, it is our opportunity to leave a legacy for Canada 150, because the next real amount of that would be Canada 200, and we all know where a lot of us will not be yet. So I will take it in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just going to make the comment, just so you know, we're looking at the, the proposal that's before council is the eight-by-eight, which allows up to 400 participants. So just, so you know, it isn't the 600 participant one that we have before us, it's the 400 participant, the eight-by-eight, for $12,500.
I do just want to mention that the cost saving is actually, if we charge $20 a tile, we have lengths to make up. If we go by eight, with eight-by-12, then we use what's eight-by-eight. And we have a bill to promote participants.
We do. It changes the dimension a little bit of the project, as long as we can find the space. If we were to go indoors for eight by twelve versus the eight by eight that administration has proposed. So you're absolutely right on your thinking. The challenge is that it also, going back to our Counselor Ducking Camp's point being that this is uncharted or unbudgeted money. So the, I guess the question is, do we put out more money or less money? And I guess that my personal would be able to go with the eight by eight and go with twelve-five, but that's just my opinion. So I think, uh, Counselor Torres is first, and then I'll work from there.
Thank you, Worship. I was kind of on the fence on this one, so I wanna sit back and see what everyone has to say before I really, really, uh, made up my mind, because I, I think it's, you know, either way, I think, you know, we're fine. And, uh, at the end of the day, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, whether you sell a portion or you don't, we probably will sell a portion against some level of corporate sponsorship. We spend a lot of money on recreation. We spend a lot of money on infrastructure. We don't spend nearly the same kind of things on arts and culture in the city. And, uh, there's people who, you know, for their quality of life, that's important. Um, so this is from a money ball perspective of twelve thousand five hundred dollars in my improved quality of life and added legacy for some people, I think is important. I think it's a good thing to do, and really, at the end of the day, it's not that much money. So, uh, yeah, I'm in favor of it. As far as legacies go, even if we didn't do this and we decide not to with the group, um, we're gonna have a nice wastewater treatment plant. We're gonna have fancy roads. We're gonna have lots of things that, you know what, and a good set of management. And we're gonna have a good legacy regardless of whether there's a mural or not. Thank you.
Counselor Baker, another question.
Well, your worship, sometimes politically, I didn't wanna get into this, but you have to support provincial federal government submissions as well as the city initiatives. Uh, municipalities, as we all know, are a child of the province and et cetera, et cetera. But sometimes you have to support, um, a nationwide promotion of the hundred and fifty that I mentioned. And I think that Lloydminster should be a leader and be part of that, whether you like the government or you don't like the government. Uh, we have to live with them every day and they have to live with us. And sometimes you, uh, you have to support sometimes things that may not be a hundred percent correct in your mind, but maybe across the country, they're a good thing. And, uh, I hear people say every day, the Centennial. We have a Centennial Civic Center, which is dope fifty years ago. It's, our kids play hockey with every day. And, uh, that Centennial Civic Center, uh, if you look at the findings, there was grants provided for the Centennial Civic Center. It's right on the wall up there, if you can't find it in the city records. So I think sometimes we have to do this, and that grounds alone, I would support the eight by eight, uh, purchase.
Counselor Baker.
Well, I would, uh, like to keep that eight by, eight by twelve open, uh, because I feel very strongly that we should have a committee and that they should make that decision. Uh, I do feel very strongly that they will be able to get some corporate dollars and to, uh, to assist in this. Uh, the outside, uh, these tiles are a little bit different than the Buffalo, uh, Twin Buffalo. They're, they're actually a stone tile or the, uh, Buffalo Twins were a wooden tile. Uh, so they mentioned that this, that is gonna have a much more positive effect than the easier outside. You see ATV in Vermillion, or sorry, in Vegreville, uh, they put theirs, uh, uh, the, the city of Vegreville put their, uh, their one fifty on the ATV building. So I think there was some sponsorship in, in that as well. But, uh, the people that I've talked to, they feel very confident, uh, that, uh, uh, that they're gonna, they're gonna be able to get a wide scope of, you know, four to six hundred people. I mean, this is gonna touch, it's not just arts and culture, but you've got schools that are being involved. You've got a whole cross section of the community, past athletes, uh, uh, some of our current athletes. I think it's, uh, you know, it's really a great community project and, uh, it has a great wingspan in there. So I feel confident, uh, that, uh, that these folks are gonna be able to, uh, to raise some dollars. And, you know, I guess we gotta deal with that speed side of things. Uh, but with the, with the little caveat that we might be able to, if they were coming up short, that we would have a little bit of, uh, wiggle room for them. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Counselor Monroe, do you have anything else to add?
No, I have no further comments.
Okay. So I'm looking for direction from council. You've got two thoughts, so let the, uh, the council, the council set the direction, and we'll go from there. So looking for someone to make a motion.
Ellen.
Okay, Counselor Dodger.
I'm with the council approval to purchase the eight by eight mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars plus GST. And the council asks administration to form a community committee to determine location of the mural.
Second here. Counselor Torres, any further discussion? Now, I've seen it.
My point, sorry, my point is that I understand the difference between that eight by eight and eight by twelve for the purchase price of whatever it is, it's five hundred. But I just really think that we should possibly look at the opportunity of the eight by twelve. This is, if we are gonna charge it for twenty dollars a tile, we're not raising that money in the long run with going to the bigger mural than the art of eight by eight. And we give more people the opportunity to be part of the project.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm gonna look to the city clerk. Is that gonna be a friendly amendment? Would that be what we would call the, the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, you can make your friendly amendment to the motion currently being debated, motion number twelve five.
All right. Counselor Monroe, would you be, is that what you'd like to do, is make a friendly amendment, make it to an eight by twelve for fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's great.
All right. Would mover of that motion entertain the?
Sure.
Friendly amendment. All right. Second here. Counselor Fagman. So the motion has been, uh, friendly amended to basically look to the eight by twelve mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars plus GST, but following, uh, the council would ask administration to form a community committee to determine location of the mural. That's what I understand. Is that, Counselor Baker?
Worship, can I speak to a?
Yes, you certainly can.
Well, the eight by twelve is fine, but where are you gonna put it? That's what happened with the one that's hanging on the college. If you get it too big, how are you, where are you gonna put it? So can you leave some flexibility there for the committee?
Yeah, I would agree with that, because, uh, it might not, uh, the eight by twelve might not work, but then maybe there, and you might find something that does, but if they add that flexibility.
So I was, uh, looking to the clerk, just so that we, the motion, do we have to put that intent in there, or is it, is it a discussion here, but the motion is more specific?
Could we make an amendment to that, that council approved the purchase of an eight by eight or eight by twelve mural from Mosaic Canada in the amount of twelve five like you see, fifteen thousand like you see, depending somehow on the location?
Look, we have a motion on, um, that specifically changes the, uh, intent of the motion, so we have to deal with this motion first. Should we draw a friendly amendment, um, the motion can be redrawn, and then we consider it if you want to follow the procedures.
Your worship, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dodger.
Make a friendly amendment motion.
All right, here we go again. So it's a new motion. So, uh, Counselor Fagman, would you like to make that motion?
Um, I make motion that we, uh, give permission to purchase the mural, uh, up to a price of twelve thousand five, fifteen thousand, sorry, fifteen thousand for the eight by twelve mural.
For, I think.
I'll say that.
We just need to clarify, can I, I don't know what, Counselor.
To a maximum.
A maximum of fifteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
And with the verbatim that goes with it, the council would ask administration, form a committee and, and from a, that's the intent of the motion.
Yes.
We got that done? Thank you. Counselor Monroe, would you like to second that motion, did you say?
Yes, I love it.
All right.
I just wanna, sorry, I just wanna be clear what I'm voting on, what the motion is, that's all. Okay. Number two.
It's number two, but it may be, it may be a smaller amount, subject to where it goes.
Got it.
Got it? Okay. Any other questions or comments before I call for?
Worship, just, and it doesn't need to be included in the motion in this way, but I'm, I'm hearing that the seven thousand saved will be carved and set aside as, as part of our commitment. And I guess without adding that into the motion, I just wanna make sure that understanding exists.
That's the direction I'm getting from.
Is that an aspiration? Okay.
Okay. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Counselor, uh, opposed? Counselor Monroe, how do you vote?
Oh, in favor.
Carry.
Worship is amazing. How many twenty-foot high walls are there? Isn't it, it's done?
Absolutely. That's a very good point, Counselor. With a, a committee and with our administration working with the committee of volunteers, I think we have the opportunity to, to, uh, see what they come back with and go from there. So I'm just, uh, Counselor Torres is just wondering if this coffee is blocked, you know? Thank you very much, Counselor. Moving on to the agenda of six point four point two, uh, looking to Executive Manager, Don Stein, please.
Thank you, Worship, through City Mayor. Before we have the twenty eighteen street improvement program consulting engineer award. Recommendation that council award the twenty eighteen street improvement program design, construction management agreement to fire engineering company limited of Lloydminster Opera for a total of two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents plus GST. And that mayor and city clerk, the author has signed and sealed all necessary documents. The twenty eighteen street improvement program is an annual program with due to occupy our, our streets here in the city of Lloydminster. It will consist of miscellaneous concrete curve and gutter repairs, intersection rehabilitation, the addition of train lanes at intersections and maintenance maintenance. Miscellaneous sort of road patching and repair. A request for proposal, RFP, was issued and has closed to acquire a consulting engineer for designing and construction management for this project. The twenty eighteen SIP improves SIP, which is the street improvement program, will be comprised of three main components. A street improvement program, concrete sidewalk improvement program, and international trail improvement program. Engineering team in collaboration with customers has established a priority list of locations determined to require improvements. Geotechnical exploratory exercises are also underway for the purpose of collecting data on existing conditions in these locations. Work is ongoing to finalize this homework for the year. The street improvement program information report was presented in a discuss of a GPC committee meeting on January second, twenty-second, twenty eighteen. On December twenty-second, twenty seventeen, an RFP was issued and posted out Coollet alert for state action, South Standers and the city's website. The RFP period closed on January eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and the city received several proponents submitting a bid. Of the seven submissions, one company withdrew their submission. The remaining six submissions were reviewed by the evaluation committee based on the requirements of the RFP, criteria and waiting shown in table one, and summarized in table two. Table one identifies the proponents who are evaluated on methodology and work plan, key staff qualifications, corporate qualifications and experience, schedule and financial summary. Total scores reviewed were fire engineering fifty-eight-five point two percent, stat tech consulting eighty-three point four, AECOM eighty-one point eight percent, MBE engineering sixty-nine point one percent, LIFT Association's Limited sixty-three percent, and Resource Management International Incorporated fifty-six point two percent. As a result of the evaluation process and as shown in the table about fire engineering company limited had a high score and is therefore considered the most qualified consultant to fulfill the requirements outlined in the RFP. Fire engineering's proposal is very comprehensive and reflected their knowledge of local site conditions and limitations based on their past experience in completing previous improvement programs in the city. A thorough analysis of each of the proposals was conducted to ensure the proponent with the best understanding of the requirements of why the RFP is selected. Some of the key items analyzed considering the following, the time estimated for construction management. This is done to ensure the time insured by each proponent is reasonably based on the requirements of the RFP. Understanding the time requirement for construction management will result in a lower proposed cost and a higher anticipated cost through the change orders. The tasks included in the proposal cost, this is done to ensure that all tasks required in the RFP are accounted for and in the proposal cost. Options are that council approve the award of twenty eighteen street improvement program design and construction management agreement to fire engineering company limited of Lloydminster for a total of two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred eighteen ninety-six cents plus GST. Approval will allow the project to kick off early and increase likelihood of completion before the end of the year with minimal hindrance. Or that council delay the award of the project, uh, to fire engineering in the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred eighteen. This will delay the start of the project potentially and decrease the likelihood of completion of design before the end of the year. Or that council direct administration to gather more information and information be presented at the next council meeting. In a budget, twenty eighteen street improvement program is the capital budget. Has an available budget of four million, awarding the project to the proponent who will receive the available budget. Typically, consulting firms are allotted ten to fifteen percent of the overall capital project. This comes well within that ten percent fraction. I pass it back to you, your worship. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Executive Manager, Don. Counsel, any questions for administration?
I'll kick this off then.
After.
The executive manager, Don, I'm looking at this and saying, okay, if we've, in the RFP process that went over to the engineering companies where there's seventeen thousand dollars difference and even higher in some cases, and, you know, the grading is fairly close for the score finishes, but can, is there, is if they're asked engineer, we've laid out the RFP, what, what differentiates some of these bits? But what are we missing here on the, just two, two charts?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, I think some of the accountability, we'll, um, back to administration on, uh, defining the scope real clearly, uh, upfront. Uh, the more detailed your RFP is, uh, the closer your bid should be. Um, in saying that, companies that don't have a lot of experience dealing with these two programs in particular that we're gonna talk about today, our street improvement program and our water screw replacement program, the amount of time, uh, requirement, the amount of site inspection requirement to fulfill the obligations of the project, uh, there are hours submitted for the, uh, work. So, um, for example, one proponent bid sixteen hundred hours to, uh, which resulted in the budget they provided in the RFP. Uh, another proponent budgeted twenty-one hundred hours, uh, the proponent that, uh, submitted the twenty-one hundred, twenty-one hundred hours has a really good understanding of the project, a real good understanding of what it takes, has completed the program, program for the city in the past. So when you look at the difference in hours provided, um, there's a big discrepancy in the actual bids submitted. So we, as, I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't a part of the evaluation committee, but the engineering team did a thorough analysis of all the proponents. Looked at all the components that, uh, were taken into consideration, uh, number of hours, uh, budgeted, uh, average cost per hour by the proponent. Um, weather, travel, hotel expenses were included in that budget. Uh, and at the end of the day, our engineering team is extremely comfortable with the, uh, proponent that we've, um, selected to, to be awarded the project, and we feel that, um, the number of change orders and change scopes will be limited based on their knowledge of the project. So I hope, hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I, I think it does most of it, and you brought up change orders, because anyone in the construction industry, and I know Counselor Baker is very familiar with these from his experience in the past. My limited experience says that if there's gaps in the engineering or planning at the front end, leads to change orders in the back end. And the more you cover in the front end, and I would hope in the RFP going forward that will limit the opportunities for change orders, because that's where the extra dollars come in. And depending on what industry you come from, change orders can be leveled to much higher rates. So that's, again, something that's.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. That, that you, 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 you fully understand what, what, uh, what our requirements are. I think our list and our accountability back on our staff when we're doing the RFP is establishing a better way to really compare apples to apples when we're, when we're doing these. Now, we, uh, RFP is project similar to how we've done in the past. I think what we've evaluated based on our deeper, um, look at, what our bonus hat. what our opponents have within each of their proposals, number of hours, what they've included, what they haven't included, has brought to our attention that we probably do need to be more clear, identify things more clearly in our RFP process to make sure that when we do get our bids back from all the proponents, that they're closer related and we can compare apples to apples that way. Another option, and this has been talked about in our, from our administration side, there's other methods of tempering these types of services. Qualification-based service is something we look at a little more deeper, which will give us the ability to do that more detailed comparison of apple to apple, hours to hours, rate for rate, and those types of things.
I think that would be appreciated, knowing that that's being done. From my perspective, I'm sure Council shares the same feeling. At the end of the day, because we're, again, back to taxpayers' dollars being involved, being sure that we've ensured that we've got the best bang for the dollar, because it's really what it comes down to. As you said, if we chose one of the lower components, but all of a sudden 500 more hours of engineering, whatever that number is, times 500, puts us over what we're proposing from administration, then we didn't do enough. We didn't work out. I think that's, that's the important part, knowing administration is aware of that. Appreciate that. Counselor Baker.
Thank you, your worship, Don. RFP systems of bidding are good in their back. Like as Executive Manager Don said, he suddenly lowballs the hours, and he ends up paying the extra present. And I have witnessed this for many years. In the European system, they throw up the high bid a little bit, take what's left, divide it out, whoever's in the middle has probably got the best bid. And that's been proven many times. So the end price, and I guess the reason I'm bringing this up, over the years, when I've been on council, people say, well, how come you didn't give it to the little guy? The only one question I have is, if they go over the hours, they build us for extra time. Do they ever come in under hours? Not often, right? But I think that should be part of the conversation and the accountability for their time. I mean, you can't add it two ways. That's not an upset price. It's a price. But if I'm short, I'll go over, but if I do it for 100 hours less, I'm still going to get paid that price. What kind of contract do they call that?
Well, well, so.
Yeah, I know what you're looking for. Counselor, the new proposal that Council looked at here not that long ago, approved that the wastewater treatment plant is a new concept. You know, maybe that's a new trend that we may start and may need to look at, saying, let's share this, because then the engineer would have a piece of that pie, as it is what proposal for wastewater treatment plant. Maybe we'll start a new trend, because you're absolutely right. At the end of the day, yeah, I don't want to mix things up, but there's definitely interest in that program, because it has benefits for all the players.
Your worship, if I could just add to that. From an engineer's perspective, I've worked on these projects in the past. I had some history too. Nobody's saying StatTech can't deliver their project, because I firmly believe they could deliver the project. When we look at what is included in your proposal for 171,000, their total hours were 500 hours different than what our local consultant provided in their bid. Our local consultant has delivered this project two or three years in the past. They fully understand what the requirements are. They fully understand the site commitment in order to deliver the project. When we broke down the total hourly rate, so total number of hours divided by total cost proposed, there was significant difference in that average hourly rate. I believe it ranged from $167,000 to $135,000. So when we look at limiting our risk of additional costs and scope changes, we feel that the proponent, Bar Engineering, that we advised for approval, will deliver that with the least amount of opportunity for risk of overscope.
Just to follow up, I guess, because I think the answer may have come there. But for me, I guess, the question is, if we've placed that high rating on it in the references, do we, do we know hysterically around? Hysterically, maybe? Historically? Bar Engineering, how many, how close are they to the hours from what they bid? And I guess the question would then be to StatTech. So I recognize their hours may be lower, but if we look at prior work they've done and they're on the money every time, maybe they just do better work. So that's the other side of that, I guess. So as we look at that and see the difference in hours in RFP, and it's just, I guess, more of a question putting it out there, because I don't know how much of that's looked at to. As you say, they both can probably do the job and they, you know, these are not strangers, if you like, in the construction world. So I'm sure they both can do the job. But from my standpoint, I guess, from the city's perspective, is that how accurate are they? Are they close to the hours? Is, what percentage are they off? And I wouldn't, you know, I think from, from the standpoint of other jobs, StatTech is done. How close are they to the number of days and hours they built for? And that would be part of the reference check process. Because at this point, I have no clue, and I see it's a focus and a big part of this. And yet, you know, I'm trying to figure out the, you know, nose in and hands in. I'm asking the questions, and I don't want to be sitting at the table doing that. But I guess the level of assurance that there is an apples-to-apples comparison as well. Do you know the guys? The hours are there. These guys are different by 500 hours. But what if in all the projects they come in with, you know, plus or minus 2%, whereas, you know, compared to the others? That's all.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And to speak to that, I think if we're looking at your design proposal, I would agree with that analogy 100%. When we're looking at, you know, our Street Improvement Program or Water Surfer Replacement Program, there's a lot of folks that we encounter. We have contractors that are out looking for advice on a fairly regular basis. They work lots of weekends and evenings. Having the local presence, I think, pays for itself in the little bit of extra money we spend. On top of that, we also looked at staff that will be on site. Bar Engineering proposed to have a fellow that's been looking after the city for the past couple of years, who is a PGE, has a lot of experience in the project. Although the person coming from the other proponent is likely very experienced, they don't have that professional engineering designation, or as it was alluded to through our engineering team. So I think a lot of things factor into there. And when we look at these two programs specifically, I think there is merit to having the local proponent and the number of hours of experience they have. I agree on a design basis, and there you can look at, while they, they both have the quality of staff to deliver the project and they deliver those all the time. Bringing somebody in from out of town to deliver the Street Improvement Program or Water Surfer Replacement Program will, will be definitely more time-consuming than what we can admit.
Counselor Baker, can I?
Thank you, your worship. It's interesting, as I was going through the package on the weekend, if you look at the next request for decision, you know, to shed some perspective on this one. If you look at the same two points that apply for both of these projects, and it's the reverse dollar figure on the next one. So to me, it does speak to the knowledge of the program, the knowledge of what needs to be done. You know, so just wanted to throw that out there, that there's those two things are opposite and the next thing we're going to see.
Absolutely, Counselor, I agree with that as well. Good point you brought up, because people are going to say, well, that was that price. And all of a sudden, how that, Counselor Baker alluded to, you throw the bottom and the top out, and you work in the middle, and go from there. Certainly, that's a merit, because, you know, it doesn't matter. And I know based on different projects, some people do go strictly with the lowest. Doesn't matter what, and there's usually a cost at the end.
I'll make a motion if you'd like to.
I just want to confirm that Counselor Monroe doesn't have any questions or comments?
No, for the line, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that Council award 2018 Street Improvement Program Design and Construction Management Agreement to Bar Engineering Company Limited of Lloydminster, Alberta, $286,518.96 plus GST. And that the Mayor and the City Clerk, the author has signed all necessary documents.
Thank you, Counselor. Second, Counselor Buckingham. Any further discussion or comments? Not seeing any, I will call for a question. All in favor? Counselor Monroe, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Kerry. Moving on to 6.4.3, we're back to Executive Manager Don.
Thank you, your worship, through State Manager. Before we have the 2018 Water Surfer Main Replacement Program. Recommendation that Council award the 2018 Water Surfer Main Replacement Program Design and Construction Management Agreement to Bar Engineering Company Limited of Lloydminster, Alberta, for $131,000 plus GST. And that Mayor and City Clerk, the author has signed and sealed necessary documents. Each year, the city undertakes a replacement program and replaces each underground service infrastructure. This year, the city, through its engineering department, has issued a request for proposals to acquire the services of an experienced engineering consultant to assist with the designing and construction management of the program. The Water Surfer Main Replacement Program is an annual program aimed at replacing and upgrading cities engaging municipal infrastructure. The aim of this year's program is to upgrade and replace the city's pipeline that were built before around 1950s, while also appearing to roll away another service condition. A request for proposal was issued on December 22nd, 2017, asking engineering consultants to submit proposals on how they would design and manage the construction of the replacement program. Proposals were received from 10 engineering consultants. Each proposal was evaluated in accordance with evaluation criteria as outlined in the RFP. Methodology, work plan, key staff qualifications, financial summary, corporate qualifications, experience, and schedule. Proposals reviewed by the Evaluation Committee based on the requirements of the RFP and val- valuation criteria above. The results are summarized in the table below. Bar Engineering, 67.4%, CIMA plus, 65.6%, Select Engineering, 62.3%, ADCOM, 53, or 59.7%, Hall North, 59.2%, StatTech, 57.2%, MPE, 56.8%, Associated Engineering, 56.1%, Clifton, 49.9%, and SC Design Consulting, 45.9%. Based on the evaluation of proposals, as shown in the table above, Bar Engineering Company Limited has the highest score and therefore considered to be most qualified to fulfill the commitments outlined in the request for the proposal. The methodology was very comprehensive and reflected their knowledge of local set conditions and limitations based on their past experience in completing previous water sewer replacement programs for the city. A thorough analysis of each of the proposals was conducted to ensure the proponent with the best understanding of the requirements outlined in the RFP is selected. Some of the key items analyzed consisted of the following. Time estimated for construction management, tasks included in the proposal cost, and additional expenses and dispersals such as cost of hotel stay, travel time, and meals, especially for consulting firms outside the city's boundaries. The analysis showed that some of the lower-priced bids did not include reasonable time for construction inspections, nor were they omitted important tasks such as construction layout, or it was not clear if they included additional expenses for motel, stay, structural, and meals. Options that Council approved the 2018 Water Surfer Replacement Program Design and Construction of Bar Engineering, or that Council direct administration bring forward more information prior to making a decision. And that Council, or number three, that Council direct administration to delay acquisition of engineering consultant to assist with the construction rehabilitation program. The approved budget for the 2018 Water Surfer Replacement Program is $3 million. The approved budget may use for engineering services, geotechnical services, and construction. The same as the last one, typically 10% of the engineering fees are associated with this portion of work, and we are well within the percentage for this project.
Thank you, Executive Manager Don. I guess we've kind of beat up the last one pretty good, but that's exactly, one question I did have about this one. Executive Manager, does this mean that the items that you last referred to in the analysis of the lower-priced proposal did not include a reasonable time for construction inspections? Are they still in this bid list, or did they get thrown out then? Counselor Kerry, for clarity's sake.
I shouldn't even address that. I have quite good information for me. By my belief, your worship, is that they were still evaluated, but their score would have been reflected in the appropriate manner.
Okay, and I guess that's, my one comment would be to administration, if there's any concern at all, I would support them saying that that bid would be removed. For clarity's sake, because for some reason, we get to this point, and then there'd be reservations at administration. That's the experts that we hire. I believe you folks have the ability to delete those couple, if that's what the case was.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And it leads back to the discussion around the first one that we talked about. Be very clear in our RFP prior to submission, stating the basic requirements that you need to meet and identify. And if you don't meet those, essentially, you may not be compliant. So it does put the lowest back on us to be more clear and consistent with our RFP process.
Thank you. Counselor Baker, you have the floor. Well, I was going to report for the motion. Just one more comment that I had made, and just, oh. Executive Manager Don, just for clarity's sake as well, as we pass the first motion. Our bid does allow us, this latitude as council, not necessarily choose the lowest bid. I'm sure, I just wanted to make that sure, and clear that we didn't end up with that much of a rear-jack situation.
Yes, so within the document, the RFP, we do specify that we can accept any bid. Doug would probably be the best one from a legal perspective, but we do, I don't know, we can select whichever it is the most effective just for the city.
Okay, that's all I need to know. I'm going to take your motion, but I just want to tell my Counselor Monroe, she have any questions?
No.
Let's just kind of add a comment. Yeah, and I'm not sure if it'll come out right or not, but part of the challenge, as I look at this, is that if I'm a company outside of Lloyd at this point, I'm kind of going to a review on a bid. If I see Bar Engineering mailing out all time, I guess, and that's not, if Bar Engineering is doing the work and according to spec and all those other pieces, I guess if I'm on the outside going, when do I ever get a chance? You know, if my bid is lower and I'm still not doing it, and I still have good references. So it's just kind of, sort of muddling through these ideas in my head around it, where, you know, trying to find the balance of getting quality work. You know, we have our own, you know, staff that know what the hours are going to be completely. They haven't been, they've been to this rodeo before. And yet, trying to find a balance around this, because people will do thorough applications, and there won't be much worth in it. So I'm not sure that's a bad thing or a good thing, but I just, I guess, being cognizant of it is, you know, at some point, you may not, you know, Bar Engineerses will not do it anymore. Now what do you do?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. We do have lots of different engineering firms doing work within the city. I'm pretty sure all north who did bid on this project is, was successful in securing that Northwest Drainage Channel design. So we do look at other consultants to provide those services. I think these two are special projects. I mean that with the utmost transparency. They are very unknown. They are difficult. They do take a specific understanding of what we're trying to do, understanding of local contractors, understanding of local conditions. And I think, yes, it's difficult for another consultant to get in, when Bar's been delivering that project for the city for many, many years. At the end of the day, you're liable to that, when things are working really, really good and working on, you got to learn to get it, don't change towards.
And all that, Clifton Associates does have an office in this community. So they're already serving this community. ADCOM is, various divisions of the company in the community. So there's, from that perspective, you know, some of the others certainly, Centurion, Edmonton, Calgary, StatTech, and I mean, there's, there are a couple on this list for sure that have a presence in the community. And there's always a hope that they, others will establish, because I think as the industry comes back with the economy, there's always that opportunity, considering later we'll land another one or two engineering firms. There's other engineering firms in town just don't specialize in these particular ones.
No, I heard you speak to, you know, having that local access to, you know, the staff here is timely and a logic project involves also.
No other questions? I will take your entertaining.
Your worship, this brought to me to line here. It's all about quality work. We have some, and we've talked about this, Don, Executive Don. Some of these streets in the last few years aren't standing up well. There's trail, film, and all sorts of stuff. And the chief part's the engineer. If you don't get that compaction, all those other things right, somebody's going to pay the bill. And I'll tell you, there's a pile of bills out on the west end, I would think. And I'll tell you, there's a pile of bills on the west end, I would think. Somebody's going to spend some money fixing those dips and settling dips.
One-sixty secondary?
Well, no, no. Some of those other, I can't tell you the street number, top of my head, they go west there. I talked about it before in council. But in any case, you go and look at the last project, and it's totally a well, you're not seeing. And that's what I look for, is seeing. Somebody's better doing something right, and I think that's important. Whether everybody can or can't, that isn't the question. And the other factor we talked about, or I had, or I did, asked about the confusion downtown. You know, that's a pretty touchy spot where we're going to be going this year. And it's going to be causing problems for some people, and mostly for you guys. But in any case, we talked about cooperation from everybody, the engineers, the sewer and water guys, and everybody, to make it happen in some of the peak hours or off-hours, I should say. And whether you can make that happen or not, I don't know. But I believe you can with some of these folks. And without any further ado, I'd like to make a motion, my name.
I will take that motion, Counselor.
The counsel award two thousand and eighteen water sewer main replacement program designed construction management agreement to bar engineering, the mayor of Lloydminster Alberta, a hundred and thirty-one thousand plus GST. And then the mayor and city clerk, the author, to sign and say all of this, and documents.
Seconded by Counselor Dyche. Any other comments, Counselor Monroe?
No.
All right, if I'm having any more comments, I'll call for the question, all in favor. And how do you vote, Counselor Monroe?
Two-finger.
Carrie. Would Marilyn or Dan please step over and just bring Counselor Thorson back in, please?
Your worship, while we're waiting for, so we can have Counselor come back. Just in regards, I hope we had some settling issues on sixty-seven, or Sixty-Second Street west of Setley, I believe. That was a deficiency that the contractor did during construction. We've had them to come back and repair that, and we've got additional warranty on that. So when those things do happen, we do hold our construction companies accountable for those deficiencies. And, you know, we're getting it repaired, and we'll give it some additional warranty out of it as well. So I understand we do have some times where things don't always work a hundred percent, but we do monitor and keep track of it.
The mayor worship, I wasn't criticizing our staff.
No.
I was just saying, you gotta do it right the first time.
I agree with you, I just wanted to make point, we do hold our contractors accountable when we can.
You're all good, Counselor.
Sure.
You bet.
I'm ready to go.
We had a sorry interruption.
Have you listened to that?
I'm there, all right. So let's get back to the agenda. Don't see anything under operation six-five. Or six-six, staff. Moving on to item number seven, of course, moments of information, I'll let this in. Move, move there. Under number eight, from mayor and council reports, I'll lead the charge, I don't have anything written. Counselor Dyche, I believe it was to the blanket ceremony, that's going to be exercise, that's going to be held tomorrow night at six-thirty PM at Grace United Church, Thursday, February thirteenth. I encourage many of the counselors, administration, residents that can make it out for this event. I had the opportunity to attend one earlier, late last year, and it was a very interesting and moving experience, is the words I'll use. It certainly brings light to history that was not taught in school when I went to school, I don't know if it's being taught today or not, but certainly gave me a total insight to life early in this country, and some of the things that the First Nations and indigenous people have faced. So I encourage people to try and take that event in, and there'll be more, be another event on the twenty-seventh, I'll bring up at the twenty-sixth meeting, but certainly that's the one item I wanted to highlight. Again, it's another busy week, I'd like to welcome the agricultural community to the city, as they're in on a regular basis, but they'll be here for AgroVision at the Lloyd X. And certainly there's a highlight speakers coming in on the fourteenth and fifteenth. So it's an opportunity, if you get a chance, to learn about some new agricultural technology. If you want to see what's going on in the agricultural world, there's definitely going to be a series of speakers and presentations and trade shows that will certainly highlight the agricultural business that has been fast to change in Western Canada and throughout the world. Any other comments or comments from any counselors? Not seeing any. Oh, Counselor Monroe, sorry, I didn't check with you.
I can hear you, nothing here.
All right. I'll go on to number nine, any other matters? For this council, for this time. Not seeing any, I will move to, oh, Counselor Monroe, any other matters?
No.
Thank you. I am going to move to inquiries from the media.
Thank you, your worship, at this time, there are requests for yourself, Merrill Rose, as well as counselors Thorson, Buckingham, and I.
Thank you. With that, I would love to counsel for direction.
Motion for indoor leases.
Seconded, Counselor Pagnon, all in favor? How do you vote, Counselor Monroe?
In favor, thank you for your opinion.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll let you go now, Counselor Monroe, and return back to the sun, whatever else.
I agree.
Thank you.